This meeting of the Starfield Board of Aldermen will now come to order. Please rise and say that you pledge allegiance, after which Alderman Vaughn would like to yield to Father Vargas, allegiance in a word of prayer, and we will observe a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, in the Scriptures you have said that citizens are to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, we pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembly. We pray for the agenda set before us. Please give us the assurance of what pleads you, for what would benefit those who live and work around our beloved city. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement. Give us a spirit of service and remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be leaders of your people and help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all people, no matter how weak, how poor, with the reverence that you create in the service. Renew us with the strength of your presence and in the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person, we bring our prayers as we ask this as your sons and daughters confidence of your goodness and your love. Amen.
You have before you a copy of the agenda as written. Are there any proposed revisions to the agenda as written? Any proposed revision, Alderman Carver?
On page three, under Planning, Item C, I'd like to move that to the first item under Board Business.
All right, the proposed revision by Alderman Carver is to reorder the agenda placing Item 11 to C, the discussion and consideration of PP 16-05, to the first item under Board Business. That would make it Item 10A and move what was previously Item 10A to Item 10B. Alderman Carver, is that your proposed revision?
Yes, sir.
Are there any objections? An objection? An objection saying none? Alderman Carver, do you have further proposed revisions?
No, sir.
Any further proposed revisions to the agenda? Are there any further proposals? The city attorney has a recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, on page four, Item HI or H1 under Parks, the contract for the fireworks display on July 4th. That contract has not been fully negotiated, so I would recommend removal from this agenda to bring back at the May 3rd.
Same move.
The proposed revision from Alderman Carver is to remove Item 11H1, a request for approval for July 4th, 2016 Annual Fireworks Showcase Contract from the agenda. Alderman Carver, is that your proposed revision?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear any objections? An objection? An objection? An objection saying none? That matter's been removed from the agenda. Does the city attorney have further proposed recommendations?
One other mayor on the last page, Page 6L1, request approval of an agreement between the city and Adidton Water Association. The Adidton Water Association asked for that to be pulled on their end so they could tweak it further, so I would recommend that be removed as well.
So the proposed revision from the city attorney is to remove Item 11, or excuse me, the recommendation from the city attorney is to remove Item 11L1 from the agenda. That's a request for approval of an agreement between the city of Starkville and the Adidton Water Association. Do I hear a recommendation?
Some more.
Recommendation has been made by Alderman Vaughn to remove Item 11L1, a request for approval of an agreement between the city of Starkville and the Adidton Water Association for emergency water connection and joint billing of Adidton Water Association water service and Starkville utility service from the agenda. Alderman Vaughn, is that your proposed revision?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear any objections? An objection? An objection? An objection saying none? That matter's been removed from the agenda. Does the city attorney have further recommendations?
No, that is it.
Are there any further proposed revisions from the members of the board? Are there any further proposals? Alderman Wynn.
Page three, Item F11F, place on consent.
And before getting too deep into the discussion, I have received a message from the vice mayor that until further notice he would be objecting to all consent agenda matters. Vice mayor, is that still your position?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so that matter will remain on the open agenda.
Thank you.
Are there any further proposed revisions? Any further proposed revisions? Any further proposed revisions? Saying none, a motion to approve the agenda as revised is in order.
Same move.
Motion has been made by Alderman Carver to approve the agenda as revised. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Wynn. Alderman Carver, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The first matter that you have before you for your consideration is the March 15, 2016 minutes. Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to approve of the minutes of the March 15, 2016 meeting of the mayor and board of Aldermen of the city of Starkville, Mississippi, incorporating any and all changes recommended by the city attorney, otherwise as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. We'll now move into announcements and comments by the mayor and members of the board, and I have one announcement tonight. That is, in our last board meeting, we talked a good bit about our Employee Appreciation Day, and it was a wonderful event. Many of you may have gotten a chance to read about it in the paper, and of course, our city employees were all there. As a follow-up, Herman Peters, who's director of our parks, worked with Stephanie Halbert, our acting human resources director, to put together a slideshow of the event. And I thought that was worth showing tonight so that those of you that weren't at the event can see not only what took place that day, because I think it was a rather remarkable event, but also get an opportunity to see your city workforce, most of which was present at the event. So, Mr. Clements, can you plug the show? Thanks again to Ms. Halbert and all of the city employees that participated in and helped coordinate the event, and for all of us as citizens of Starkville, I think we have a great deal to be proud of in our city workforce. Now, at this time, I'll hear any comments by the members of the board. Alderman Wynn.
Okay. Will Chief Yarborough and Engineer Kemp come to the front? Chief Nichols, you'll be next, you'll be last. Chief Yarborough, if you will, will you brief the mayor, vice mayor, and members of the board regarding that matter that we attended the Housing Authority meeting on last past Thursday?
Okay. Mayor, vice mayor, board, on last Thursday, we had a... Let me get some words. There you go. Chief, you got one.
Engineer Kemp, if you will, will you brief the mayor, vice mayor, and members of the board regarding the transportation that Mississippi State has reached out to us at the Housing Authority meeting on Thursday?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Alderman, and good evening, mayor, board. I attended the Starkville Housing Authority meeting with Alderman Wynn last Thursday and passed along some information that we had a request from the Smart Transit Authority system, and they are requesting to put two shelters, one at the intersection of Westside Drive and Long Street in front of that Housing Authority neighborhood, and another one very close near there on Reed, at the intersection of Reed Road and...I can't think of the side street there. It's in the...it slipped my mind, but it's just north of Westside Drive there, and it's in another...People's Street, yes, sir. Thank you, mayor. At the intersection of Peoples', and that with Peoples actually makes a loop, so it's the southern intersection of Peoples and Reed Road, they're going to put another shelter. These are the shelters that are similar to those that you see on Lynn Lane, the three-sided with the roof and an information board that tells how long you'll have to wait for the next bus. The Housing Authority has agreed to pour the concrete slab in those locations, and Mississippi State is going to install the shelters and do all the wiring for the informational signage.
Okay. Thank you so much. I serve as a city liaison through the Housing Authority Board, so they reached out to me, so I thought that this would be something great. And of course, like the city engineer said, Housing Authority Commissioners accepted this and embraced it on Thursday. Okay, thank you, city engineer.
Excuse me, ma'am, I've got a cough in my throat. On last Thursday, I had lunch with the Housing Authority. One of the things I wanted to do when I became chief was to offer something back to the community in the form of if something happened with structural fires. Most of the time right now, we have a structural fire. The families that are displaced usually have a place to stay for three days, sometimes a little longer, and they have to get in contact with OSR, the Red Cross. So what we wanted to do was be able to provide something similar. So I spoke with the Housing Authority, see about getting a vacant apartment. They allow us to do that if the board pleases. We got a chance to get a vacant apartment. What we do as a fire department, we go in, we pretty much bring all the apartments, paint, clean up in there, get everything taken care of. If we have a family in the city of Starkville who house, happen to catch on fire and burn, they will be able to use that shelter for three to five days. The Housing Authority has agreed to please the board to take care of the lights, water, and pretty much any utilities. We'll be responsible for getting the families in there. So we're also working right now, if the board allows, we'll be looking to feed the people also. We're going to go out to the community to see about getting them fed. We also try to provide things for them and get them transitioned on after about three or four days, transition to somewhere else, to a better place. It's something temporary.
Okay. Mayor, vice mayor, and members of the board, this would be at no cost to our city. When Chief contacted me, he realized that Columbus had been doing this, but our city, Housing Authority wasn't doing this. So that was something that they embraced Thursday also, and they were glad that he brought this to them. Okay. Okay, thank you.
I think it's an excellent idea.
Okay, thank you, sir. Chief, is there anything else that you would like to say?
No, I just hope I can get your support on this. I think it'd be a good thing for our community, like right now, when people...that's the last thing they want to worry about, where they're going to stay that night, so we can get that taken care of. Most of our structural fires sometime happen two or three o'clock in the morning. We can immediately get them over there and get them taken care of, so I appreciate your assistance.
Chief, as far as I'm concerned, it's at no cost to the city, unless the board feels it's necessary. I believe I can authorize you to do this administratively, but if the board would like to make a motion to do it, that's fine as well.
No, that's fine. I would like you to authorize that administratively.
Mr. Mayor, let's move approval. Move approval, Mr. Mayor. Let's get on the record.
All right, motion has been made by the vice mayor to approve of the proposed housing assistance program as explained by Fire Chief Charles Yarborough. Alderman Perkins, is that your motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Wynn. Alderman Perkins, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
City attorney.
Mr. City Attorney, do you see any issues with it?
Based on the facts that I'm hearing tonight, no, given that the city's not expecting any funds or providing any gifts or donations, and as long as the city walks that line and does not do those things, it would be later.
Thank you. Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes.
Thank you, Chief Yarborough. Okay, Chief Nichols, come on down. Chief, if you will, will you brief us on your walk and talk initiative? Chief, implement it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for calling me up, mayor, vice mayor, members of the board. Walk and Talk Initiative was a program that I saw being used by an agency out of Florida. As a matter of fact, one of my FBI classmates, he's with an agency, he's assistant chief, and he told me about it. And they've been doing it since 2014, so I decided it'd be a good program for us, so I researched it for, you know, mainly the last year. And basically, it's just to interact with the community, integrate the officers. We got a lot of new officers who don't know a lot of people in the community. Integrate them in the community because we are a part of the community. So just another method of outreach for us to reach the community.
And one, Chief, I would be remiss if I didn't say this. Certainly you and I talked, spoke today, and as everyone know, that our city did not receive the $2.4 million that we had requested from the legislature. I just want to say, speaking only on behalf of me, I support you and the men and the women in Blue that so proudly serve our city, and we'll get there.
Thank you so much. That means a lot. That means a lot.
And let me say this. I'm so sorry that, you know, none of us got to you first. I understand that the media notified you first, and you know how that goes. So again, I apologize to you, and thank you for your service, and thank you all that your department did.
Thank you all, y'all.
Mayor, I yield the floor at this time.
Are there any further comments by the members of the board? Alderman Vaughn.
First of all, I'd like to...hope everybody had an opportunity to enjoy this last weekend, Super Bulldog Weekend, and the Cotton District Arts Festival. It seemed to be a good time had by all. We certainly had a lot of people in town to come see all the good things that were happening in Starkville. So thanks to all the city workers, sanitation, the street crews, the police, for really helping make those a successful event. The other thing that I have that I'd like to make an announcement of tonight is April is World Landscape Architecture Month. Recently, the city, as of about two weeks ago, received an award of merit for the work that was done in 2012 that this board approved, not this board, but the previous board approved for the street mural at the intersection of University Drive and Maxwell. So if you haven't, if you have a chance, go check that out, but that recently received award, good accolade for the city and primarily those youngsters that worked on that. This Fri...on Thursday, I believe it's Thursday, April the 29th, let me get that right, on April the 29th at 8:00 PM at the Octavia Hall County Heritage Museum as part of World Landscape Architecture Month, the Department of Landscape Architecture and the chapter of the American Society of Landscape Architects is going to be showing a film at 8:00 on April 29th at the Heritage Museum. This has recently aired on PBS. It's called Ten Parks That Changed America. Starts at 8:00, it'll last about an hour. I certainly encourage you all to come out, check out the Heritage Museum grounds while you're there, and participate in what good quality public space has done for our country and what it can do for our community. So I encourage you to come out and take part in World Landscape Architecture Month. And on April 29th at 8:00 PM at the Octavia Hall County Heritage Museum.
Any further comments by the members of the board? Any further comments? Any further comments? Any further comments? Saying none, we'll move to citizen comments. At this time, anyone wishing to make comments may do so by coming forward, introducing yourself, and you'll be recognized to speak for a maximum of three minutes.
Bringing two men, woman named Abton, boy seven. I would like to recognize Vice Mayor Perkins, Alderman Vaughn, and Alderman Vaughn.
Thank you, Abton.
Thank you, Abton.
It's been on my mind, well, as citizens, Chief, we have ten of citizen police volunteers, and with everything that's going on, Chief need all the help that he can get. So it's ten of us, and if you don't want to talk to the police, you can talk to me. The worry of some people is guns and church. We don't know what's wrong with the government of Biden and Jackson, but we would appreciate any help. The church is a place of worship, not gunfight. And I would like for the chief to do a background check on me because more than one Alvin in Starkville.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Any further citizen comments?
Good evening, the mayor, board members. My name is Chris Taylor, president of Octavia Hall County NAACP. And this Saturday, we have our banquet, our 47th annual banquet. Guest speaker is Crystal Walker, a local girl from Louisville, Mississippi, and she's an Assistant U.S. Attorney, I'm talking about Department of Justice, in the Civil Division for North Mississippi. Tickets are $25. It starts at 6:30, and one of the awardees is our chief, Nichols, so I expect all seven of y'all, eight county lawyers, to be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Do we have further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments?
Good evening to the mayor, the vice mayor, the members of the board, Alderman, and to all the citizens of Starkville. My name is William Paul Ellis, and I am the vice president of the Starkville's Mayor's Chief Council. I would first like to acknowledge my fellow members who decided to be present at the meeting tonight. Will you guys please stand? We're just here tonight to thank you guys for allowing us to serve our community and to continue to be in existence. Recently, we were able to spend the day at the Cotton District Arts Festival as volunteers to help clean up, as well as spend the day at the Boys and Girls Club to help clean and improve the facilities there. And just to inform you, in the near future, we will also be spending time at a local retirement home and continue to volunteer at the Boys and Girls Club to help the children, as well as help the people who work there clean the facilities and make sure it's appropriate for all of Starkville's youth. So I thank you for this opportunity on behalf of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis, and you guys are nearing the completion of a wonderful year of service and programming activities, and it is that time of year where those of you that are seniors, hopefully I will see soon, to put cords on you at the senior ceremony. And hopefully, many of you will be traveling with us to the Gulf Coast for the Municipal League Conference this summer. Job well done, and we look forward to finishing this year out and starting another one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Seeing none, we'll move to public appearances, and we have two public appearances scheduled tonight. Each of the public appearances, you'll get 10 minutes to make your appearance, and I ask that you remain standing for any questions or comments the board may have when you've completed your presentation. Our first presentation is by Connect and Inspire Can, our youth program, by the coordinator, Megan Rice.
Thank you all for allowing us to come here to present our new program. I am not Megan Rice. My name is Michelle Bell. I am the culturally, linguistically competent coordinator for Connect and Inspire, and I'm here to present this program to you to let you know that we're here and we're available to serve the students and youth of Octavia Hall County. Our age range is from 12 to 21. We're a non-traditional approach. One of the community support specialists is going to pass out brochures to you and also referrals while I'm talking, so you can kind of get a better understanding of what this service provides. When I say non-traditional approach in non-traditional mental health-like therapy, it's for those kids who may be suffering from a tragedy, who may have had like some type of grief, or their fathers died, their house got burned, they're having transitional problems from moving from one area to another area, they're transitioning from middle school to high school, from high school to college, and from college to adulthood. So we're here to bring those services to this community, to those children who weren't normally able to receive any services. It's a system of care, which means it's a wraparound approach. We work with the families to help that youth become successful. We're calling all communities... We're calling all communities stakeholders to kind of bring those resources that nobody has ever heard of, or nobody knows about, to connect them with those youth, to provide better services and a better quality of care. This service is not necessarily a payee, is not necessarily a factor, which means that they don't have to pay for it. We've been awarded this grant through SAMSSA, which is the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Association, which means that they don't have to necessarily have to have Medicaid, or if they can't afford to copay for private insurance, we can handle that also. So we wanted to make sure that you know that we're here, we're available to serve this community, and that we look forward to working with the youth in Octavia County. Questions?
Any questions or comments for Ms. Bell? Are there any questions or comments from the members of the board?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Are you located in the Community Counseling Building?
No, sir. We have a different building from Community Counseling because we want to put away the stigma of mental health issues. A lot of times when you say mental health to people, they're like, no, I don't want any part of that. So we want to stay away from that stigma so that we can make sure they're reaching the youth that don't normally ever get served.
Where are you located?
We're located on Jackson Street, though. But it's in the buildings adjacent to the main building, so you have to actually travel up the road, and I'm sorry, I don't know the complete address. It's located on here. It's 22 North Jackson Street.
Further questions or comments from the members of the board? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Bell.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for your service.
All right.
All right, our next public appearance will be by Dr. Mimo Parisi, his team from In spark. About a year ago, I went to Dr. Parisi because he heads up one of the largest survey labs and social science research units, not only in the area, but in the southeast. And I took to him an issue, which was, we, like a lot of college towns, consistently have difficulty expressing the buying power that students and alumni who participate in our market bring to this community but are not measured by traditional methods such as the census. I took to him a survey that Tuscaloosa had conducted several years ago of their student population, and I asked if he and his staff could take that document, see how they might modify it, and how they might get at some of the same results that came from that Tuscaloosa study, because it is commonly cited as one of the better examples of how a community, a college town, quantified student buying power. So Dr. Parisi and his team have worked for that year now diligently to put together a survey instrument and a program that hopefully is going to deliver those results. And before Dr. Parisi begins his presentation, the last thing that I think you need to know is they are doing all of their work completely and totally as a service to this community. And I think when you see the presentation, you'll see it's quite extensive, and it does have a cause. It's just not being passed on to the city. Dr. Parisi?
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. I think that was a nice summary of what we're doing for the city. Member of the board, thank you for inviting us and giving you an update on what we are with this project. I don't have to convince you, the mayor is quite persuasive. When he came to see me, he, first thing he told me, he said, "I have no money. I ask what you want." So, but I've known the mayor for some time. This is really an interesting project, and it really has taken a large team to bring all things together. And so the study that was presented to us from Tuscaloosa was primarily one single group, and that was just the students. But for this to be done right, if you really want to determine the buying power of your city, you have to look at several groups, which are the students, staff and faculty, the alumni, the residents, and the visitors. So we've agreed to work with the city and to conduct all four surveys and to collect these data for the city, and so that's going to become a kind of an asset as you go after those high-end retail services. So the survey, basically, it's nothing more than a way to collect information on consumer behavior, on spending patterns, and trying to understand the retail preference of our residents. As I said, most retail companies, when they look at sites, they use census data. Unfortunately, for college towns, census data is kind of skewed because residents within a college town sometimes don't count it, or they don't count people that come visit, and all sorts of stuff. So I think this really is going to help the city to help make the case if you're interested in bringing some high-end services. Well, this is going to not be done without the assistance of the Research Office. We have to go ahead and knock the doors to several groups in Mississippi State. Also, we had to kind of come up with some sort of incentives. You can't just make a call and ask people to answer the survey. And so we asked the great development Starkville partnership if they could provide some financial assistance to identify some sort of price. So for students, it would be a smartwatch. And then for staff and faculty, it would be a package from the Athletic Department. And then for the visitor, it would be basically a package for the Starkville Weekend Getaway Package. So pretty much, we have started students and staff. We have completed already 200 surveys for both. They're pretty much underway. We're going to start the next survey next week for the Starkville residents, and we hope to have the study finished by the summer. So any questions?
Questions or comments for Dr. Parisi from the members of the board?
Alderman Carver? Just to day twice, well, first of all, thank you. And I guess on here, I also got to publicly thank Dr. David Shaw and Ms. Kathy Gustin. I know you've done it. Just to day twice, in conversation, I had people, we were talking about retail strategies, come to town, and different recruitment methods that the city's tried. Oftentimes, with different agencies that have worked for us in the past, we look at the Golden Triangle, and each and every community in that triangle is completely and separately probably polar opposites from each other. Both have positive and both have negative. Starkville has been touted oftentimes as maybe being a little smaller, but the more research-based type as a community. I told both these individuals in conversation today, I said, "We may have a study coming up. They're looking for other ways to get retailer-type individuals here." And I said, "Well, I think we might have something coming up. I think this is a great opportunity that may project Starkville in any light other than what we've already tried in the past." So again, I just thank y'all for doing this. I think we'll have some good, honest, anonymous data to come out of this. I think that it's going to be good for the community, and I think it's yet another collaboration between the university staff and the city government here in Starkville.
Any further questions or comments for the members of the board? Mayor, I want to speak to Dr. Parisi's work. You know, I've had a chance to work together on a couple of occasions, and I'm looking forward and excited about the data that's going to come out of this, because I know it'll be accurate, and I think it will help us sell our story, and I think it'll be great. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Dr. Parisi.
Thanks. Thank you.
The next matter you have before you is the discussion and consideration of PP 16-05, a request for preliminary plot approval for subdividing a plus or minus 20.7 acre parcel into two lots. Mr. Havlin, would you like to introduce this matter? While Mr. Havlin is setting up, I will note, Mr. Sanders is not with us this evening because he is ill.
There's a request by Jason Pepper on behalf of Ruth Vickers Living Trust for preliminary plot approval of subdividing a 20.7 acre parcel into two lots. The parcel is located directly behind the Starkville Christian School, and directly east of the sports place, in an R5 zone. You can see right here on the aerial map, this is the Starkville Christian School that's in lane, here's a softball field on the sports place. The subdivision is across acres, 20.7 acres, with a total of two lots. Lot one has proposed acres of 15.7, which is a larger one shown here, and lot two has proposed acres of five. This is the part that the Starkville Christian Schools is in the process of purchasing this for their future expansion. They haven't presented any plans as to what the expansion would be in the future. I think they're just getting prepared for it. This parcel is not part of a previously flat sub-vision, no notice was required. The planning's only commissioned, made recommendations for approval with one condition on April 12th. The recommended condition was that lot two shall be aggregated into the existing lot of Starkville Christian School within six months of approval. And the basis upon that condition is so that we don't leave a landlocked parcel. Any questions?
Does any board member have any question of Mr. Havlin?
Mr. Havlin, under proposed lot one, how would that lot be accessed in the future?
Currently, it's accessed with, I believe, an easement that comes right here. So the basic access and any utilities that exist or don't exist do not change for proposed lot one.
What road is that in the easement off of? Is there a road there?
It goes all the way back to Lewisville. Which I believe the surveyors in the audience, you can probably answer questions as to what type they use.
Access to that water tower comes from, is that a Zellie Lane?
I believe so.
Right next to Peters.
The only thing that's on the parcel, there's some sort of structure right here on this far east here. This is just a thing.
Total size of that large of both lots is what?
22.
22.7. 20.7.
And they're just purchasing a five-acre piece, and then there's utilities, there are the utilities that run this property.
Thank you. Further questions or comments for Mr. Hav? Any further questions or comments for Mr. Hav? Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move into discussion of the matter.
Move approval?
Motion has been made by Alderman Carver to approve of PP 16-05, a request for preliminary plot approval for subdividing a plus or minus 20.7 acre parcel into two lots as presented. Alderman Carver, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Wynn. Alderman Carver, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No, sir.
Discussion. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Thank you, Mr. Hav. The next matter you have before you is a request for approval of the finding that the city of Starkville has met all requirements for the cap loan in the total amount of $554,800 for the purposes of water meter installation and upon completion of such identified project, any other water project as needed. I am required by law to ask if there were any public comments on this matter before proceeding. Are there any public comments on this matter? Any public comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, discussion. Oh, Mr. Turner, I'm sorry.
My name is Alvin. These meters, what would they be installed to do? To the place where we have?
They will. These are automatic meters, so this is actually a meter where your usage of water and also your electric meter can be read remotely and at any time. So rather than just getting a meter read once a month on your usage, you eventually will have the capability to know what your usage is anytime you would like to know, because it will be stored in a computer. Thank you, Mr. Turner. Ms. Benson, do you have any comments that you'd like to make prior to opening the floor for discussion? I'm sorry, before Ms. Benson makes comments, were there any further public comments? Any further public comments? Any further public comments? Seeing none, Ms. Benson.
Thank you. On your March 15th board meeting, you expressed an interest to tap into the Mississippi Development Authority's Capital Improvements Law Program. There are certain i's that need to be dotted and t's that need to be crossed. And in doing so, once you pass the initial resolution, we have to inform the public of your intent to seek this funding source by advertising once a week for four consecutive weeks in a local paper, and that has been done. So the next step in accessing this low-interest law program that's available through the Mississippi Development Authority is to pass a board order of your intent. This is a low interest, will ask for a 2% interest. It will either be two or three, depending upon how much money they have in the coffers at the time the application goes in, and you have been quite successful in utilizing this program that was put in place by the Mississippi Legislature under advantage Mississippi back during the days of then-Governor Ron Muskowitz. So are there any questions?
Questions or comments for Ms. Benson? Alderman Carver?
I'm sorry, my question's more for the city attorney. Does this look good on your end?
It does.
Okay. Thank you.
Discussion. Any discussion? You have no motion, Benson? Motion has been made by Alderman Wynn to approve of the finding that the city of Starkville has met all requirements for the cap loan in the amount of $554,800 for the purpose of water meter installation, and upon completion of such identified project, any other water projects as needed as presented. Alderman Wynn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little or Carver? Alderman Little, Alderman Wynn, do you wish to speak on the matter? Discussion. Alderman Carver?
From a meter reading standpoint, I've got a lot of times in Board One where constituents may have a dog or something like that, and just by human nature, it's not always does the meter reader go out and get the information that they say they get. So we find after three or four months that they have one bill that might be a little higher than others, and I think this is going to alleviate a lot of that. And I did not know, Mayor, that you're saying eventually we're going to start pinging data every day, I mean, down to the daily usage.
Oh, the system will do that. Now, it will take a while to build out how the consumer can use the platform, but Terry, correct me if I'm wrong, eventually the objective is for a customer to be able to log on to their home computer and see what their usage is and track it over time.
Yeah, Mr. Turner, the more side, the system's capable of actually putting that much further than from the starting salary that we have on the left side.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Thank you, Ms. Benson.
Thank you.
The next matter on the agenda is discussion and consideration of a sidewalk closing- Motion has been made by Alderman Mayner to approve of a sidewalk closing request by the Starkville, Mississippi group for sarcoidosis to hold the 2016 Sarcoidosis Walk on April 30th and have city participation with in-kind services in the amount of $625 as presented. Alderman Mayner, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Mayner, do you wish to speak on the matter? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is the discussion and consideration of VA 16-04. Mr. Havlin, would you please introduce the matter?
VA 16-04, there's a request by Jeremy Haber on behalf of Joe Barry Koch, Koch Properties and Food Group, for variance for a maximum lot width of a proposed lot aggregation of three lots at the corner of University and Park Street in a T5 district. This is the area that the City Bagel Cafe is working in. You can see here in the aerials, Oddfellows Drive, the dark green line is the railroad The applicant is in the process of planning a proposed mixed-use development. The applicant is in the process of planning a proposed mixed-use development that will include condominiums, retail, and at least one restaurant. The property is currently three separate lots. You can see from this illustration, the outside boundary of what would be the provincial lot that aggregated, the red line is showing how the lots are divided now. The applicant is proposing to aggregate all three lots together. This would exceed the maximum allowed width of one-hundred-and-twenty feet. In the T-district codes along the frontage line, which this would be the primary frontage along University, the maximum lot width of any lot that is subdivided or aggregated together cannot exceed one-hundred-and-twenty feet. If the variance were approved, then the city staff can process the lot aggregation. The Board of Adjustment Appeals made a recommendation for approval on April 12th. This slide is just showing the one that was presented there, the rezoning. It's showing the two proposed buildings in red, and then the existing building of City Bagel that would remain for your party.
Discussion. Alderman Walker.
I'm certainly excited about this project. I think one of the things that I think is very important to discuss in this type of project is, first of all, Daniel, question, Mr. Havlin, the lot aggregation, they're primarily trying to do that for homeowners association purposes?
From my understanding, it's going to be under one homeowners association, including the restaurant side. And this kind of alleviates it even from having to do any kind of cross-parking agreements. You know, the way it sits now, this should be developed as three separate lots, but it sort of simplifies the ownership a little.
Right. So, the one question that I do have for that, if this variance were to be approved with that aggregation, it might not be a bad idea for us to say that all other rules in T-5 need to be met. What I don't want to happen is, as we're going to see more and more of the T-form-based codes along Russell and University Drive, I think, redevelop, I think we want to make sure that we hold that one-hundred-and-twenty-foot parameter. And if we don't, we need to have, there's clear a way for that variance to occur. We just need to make sure that that doesn't open the door to allow them to not do other things in T-5. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I have a motion. I'd like to move approval of VA-16 oh four, request for variance from maximum lot width requirements for proposed lot aggregation of three lots on the northwest corner of the intersection of University Drive and Hartness Street with the parcel number one-seventeen-M-dash-zero-zero-dash-one-ninety-five, one-seventeen-M-dash-zero-zero-dash-one-ninety-five dot oh-one, and one-seventeen-M-dash-zero-zero-dash-one-ninety-five dot oh-two with the following two conditions. The floor of any building that fronts University Drive shall at minimum, shall be at minimum seventy percent commercial, retail, use, non-residential at the street level. Any building that fronts University Drive shall be accessed from street level with the finished floor elevation of that floor not to exceed twelve inches above or below the adjacent sidewalk. And here's my rationale for those two requirements. I think it's been a lesson learned from the developments that we've seen in both the Whitney and the flats that are both really good projects that are going to be long-term contributors in our community. But the grade change in both of those at the sidewalk is anywhere from probably thirty inches all the way up to about six feet. And I think we need to, we've got to get a handle on that, and I think here's an opportunity. If you look at the survey, that's part of the packet, you see that the elevation change from basically City Bagel to the end of the property at the sidewalk only drops about a foot or two at the actual sidewalk grade. So, I think it's really important that from street grade, that pedestrian access into that first floor, especially into commercial retail space, needs to be accessible by grade and not through a series of steps or ramps, if at all possible. And that is the rationale for those two conditions. And I think that's going to really help extend what I would call the midtown node. We have a very exciting node of commercial activity that is burgeoning right there at that intersection. You have great restaurants in City Bagel, you have great restaurants in Little Dewey, and you have more on the way. Just to the east, you have more mixed-use development that is going to occur with retail commercial space on the ground floor. Just across the railroad, you have Stromboli's and the camp house. We have a burgeoning economic development engine in midtown Starkville that by allowing that pedestrian access to there has an opportunity to further enhance that corridor.
Have you reduced that motion to writing? Motion has been reduced to writing, and it's been read without objection. I will not ask for it to be reread. Any objection saying none? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Perkins. Alderman Walker, do you wish to speak on the matter?
Yes.
Discussion. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is the discussion and consideration of Buddy Sanders' travel.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Nguyen to approve of Buddy Sanders' travel to the Historic Preservation Division of the Mississippi Department of Archives and Histories Historic Preservation Boot Camp on May fifth through sixth in Jackson, Mississippi with advanced travel as presented. Alderman Nguyen, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Walker. Alderman Nguyen, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No, I do not.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is the discussion and consideration of the reappointment of Dallas Breen to the Transportation Commission.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Walker to reappoint Dallas Breen to the Transportation Commission representing Ward One with the term set to expire on March first, 2019 as presented. Alderman Walker, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Walker, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is the discussion and consideration of the appointment of Debbie Nettles.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Walker to appoint Debbie Nettles to the Historic Preservation Commission as presented. Alderman Walker, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Walker, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter before you is a request for authorization for the mayor to execute the quitclaim deed for two parcels of property to the Mississippi. Motion has been made by Alderman Mayner to authorize mayor to execute the quitclaim deed for two parcels of property to the Mississippi Transportation Commission, Mississippi Department of Transportation, that were inadvertently transferred to the city during the construction of the Highway eighty-two bypass as presented. Alderman Mayner, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Mayner, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
Somebody else just asked, can you just elaborate on that a little bit?
Mr. Kemp?
I didn't get enough from you.
Good evening again. These are two parcels near the intersection of three-eighty-nine and the eighty-two bypass. Typically, the Department of Transportation will turn over parcels on a local road that they don't need as part of the bypass construction through a town, more property than they actually needed. Well, they actually deeded back property to us on three-eighty-nine and eighty-two, which they own both of those roadways. So, it was something they did inadvertently. They just called it a few weeks ago, and the district engineer from Tupelo sent this to us and requested us to turn it back over so they could maintain it.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a request for permission to declare three vehicles and three pieces of equipment as surplus.
Move approve.
Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to declare three vehicles and three pieces of equipment as surplus with authorization to advertise on gov deals and remove from city inventory as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is a request for approval of claims document.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Mayner to approve of the city of Starkville claims document for all departments, including the Starkville Utilities Department as of April thirteenth, 2016, for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, 2016, as presented. Alderman Mayner, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Mayner, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
By a vote of five in favor with two against, this motion passes. And I have the two against, and that's Perkins and Vaughn. The next matter on the agenda is a request for approval of the March 2016 financial program.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Nguyen to approve of the March 2016 financial commitments as presented. Alderman Nguyen, is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Nguyen, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is a request for approval of Deputy Clerk Kenesha Hendricks to be reimbursed for college class complete. Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to approve of Deputy Clerk Kenesha Hendricks to be reimbursed for college class completed and approved to attend class per the existing city policy for reimbursable educational courses as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a request for permission to apply for a fire prevention motion. It's been made by Alderman Vaughn to apply for, to approve the application for a fire prevention and safety grant in the amount of approximately eighty thousand dollars to be used for purchase, a fire prevention trailer to be used at the station and schools. If awarded, the cost is a ten percent matching grant as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a request for authorization to hire LaShonda Wilson.
May I have your recognition, Mr. Mayor?
You may.
Honorable Finance Director, this applicant, I looked at the sheet very extensively. She appears to be well-qualified, has a bachelor's degree in business administration and an associate degree in mortuary science. I'm going to recommend her approval, move approval, Mr. Mayor.
Motion has been made by Alderman Perkins to approve of the hire of LaShonda Wilson to fill the vacant position of deputy clerk, accounts receivable in the city clerk financing administration department as presented. Alderman Perkins, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Perkins, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is a request for authorization to hire James Yarber. Did I hear a motion?
Move approve.
Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to authorize the hire of James Yarber to fill the vacant position of driver in the sanitation and environmental services department as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is a request for authorization to hire James Casey.
Move approve.
Motion has been made by Alderman Walker to authorize the hire of James Casey Johnson to fill vacant position of warehouse manager in the Starkville Utilities Department as presented. Alderman Walker, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Walker, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a request for authorization to hire Alex R. Davis.
Move approve.
Motion has been made by Alderman Little to authorize the hire of Alex R. Davis to fill the vacant position of system engineer in the Starkville Utilities Department as presented. Alderman Little, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Little, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Next matter on the agenda is a request for authorization for the Utilities Division to hire two temporary full-time employees to work.
Move approve.
Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to authorize the Utilities Division to hire two temporary full-time employees to work through the summer to perform locate service for underground utility services not to exceed ninety days as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a request for approval for Corporal Mandy Wilson and Officer Reginald Campbell to attend the 2016 State Day Air Training Conference in Biloxi, Mississippi on June twenty-sixth through June thirtieth with advanced travel of one-thousand-four-hundred-forty-two dollars fifty cents as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a discussion in consideration of declaring a 1997 Jeep Grand Cherokee. Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to approve of declaring a 1997 Jeep Grand Cherokee